To always support our high school and our school systems in our town. It is such a valuable and intrinsic part of what Worcester is and what helps Worcester excel as a community. I'd like to start off just by saying how lucky we've been. We have experienced some really good times here in Worcester and I'm hoping that those will continue. But within the last six to eight months, we've been recognized throughout the country on some different types of awards which really don't come around very often. So, one of the first ones was from a little magazine called Money Magazine. It is a component of Time Magazine. They came out in October of last year and said Worcester was one of the top places to live in the United States. In fact, number 37 is what they classified us. This was something that came out of the blue to us. We had no idea that they were considering Worcester. The first hint that we had was when they gave us a phone call and said, "We are considering you, would you submit some pictures for us?" Next one was Ohio Magazine, a state publication by a private publisher, but they called Worcester one of the best hometowns in the state of Ohio. This is actually the second time we've won this award. Back in 2006 was the other time. So it's a really high honor and a repeat honor and we were very privileged to get that. Then the other one, so we just learned of our hospital, which is a component of our city, winning the top 100 hospitals in the United States. It is a very high honor. Our hospital has actually won it four times in the past. So, all of those combined say Worcester's doing things right. Our community, our people are excelling and we are so thankful for that. Appreciate everyone's help. Am I still within my two minutes or am I done here? I mean, if you want me to continue, I will, but other than that, we can move on with the next.
Alrighty. Thank you Mayor Brenneman. And continuing off the table, Mr. Barnett.
Hello. How's everybody doing? My name's Kevin Barnett. I'm running for Ohio Representative. It's actually Mr. Wickham's position at the moment. I want to thank the high school for putting this event on. Also want to thank the students who put a lot of time and effort into putting this It's really nice that we're given an opportunity to speak with the community. And I think, I hope, by at the end of this two hours, that I will have a better understanding of what the issues that students are really concerned about and also you'll have a better understanding of, you know, me. A little bit about myself, I'm originally from New York. I spent 20 years working for a utility energy company. Started out in the union for 15 years, then moved into management. One of the positions that I had was I managed the elderly, blind, and disabled customer group. And there I learned how to really advocate for people with that hand who needs, that needed to be met. We've been here in Worcester for about 12 years. We moved here originally to open up a Bed and Breakfast. When we took the Bed and Breakfast over, the income was about $8,000 a year. We sold it four years later and it was about $35,000. So we did a nice job in bringing it up. For the last five years, I worked for Allstate here in Worcester. And I just... And one of the questions that people ask usually first thing is, "Why do you run?" I have to say that for me, it was President Obama's farewell speech. During that time, he said, "If you don't like the way your government is running, then get a clipboard, get some signatures, and run for yourself." Run. So that's what I decided to do. I took, you know, took that to heart and so this is why I'm here tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Barnett. Now Representative Wickham, the floor is yours.
Thank you. I first want to say thank you to Jacob Hooch and the whole Worcester team that put this together. It's nice to be here and be a part of this. Anytime that we can come out and engage with folks and folks gather and want us to come and speak to certain topics that are meaningful, then that's a good thing and I'm glad that great we do this. I served as county commissioner for three terms prior to running for state representative. I really appreciate it when constituents, when Wayne County folks come out, come see me or let me know what's going on or what they think. So I think this is a great opportunity. I also want to extend out the invitation for anyone who's coming down to the State House, which I go down about once a week, maybe for a couple of days, to go do business and represent Wayne County, to come on down and let me know because I'd love to show you around and see, let you see how things work in Columbus. Also, I'm also extending myself out that if there is, if there's opportunities, especially in our government classes, I want to say that I'd love to come and be a part of that and speak to those too. Prior to being county commissioner, I owned a restaurant for a little while. I was in the Air Force for four years and active duty. And I also have a master's degree in political science. So that's got a little bit of my background. I live right here in Worcester.
Thank you Representative Wickham. Mr. Kucinich, you may begin whenever you are ready.
Thank you very much. It's great to be here in Worcester. I wish that I were joined on the stage by other Democratic candidates for governor, but I felt it was important enough to come to Worcester and particularly to participate in a town hall meeting sponsored by students. So Jacob and team, congratulations to all of you for putting this on. What do you think's important? Where you look at the world's important? For those who wish to hold high office and the highest office in the state of Ohio is the governor's office, it's imperative that we listen to the voices of young people. And so I'm here in that spirit. It's also important to communicate what one stands for and who someone is. I grew up in the city of Cleveland. I graduated from St. John's Andrews High School and then attended Cleveland State. Went to Case Western Reserve where I have a bachelor's and master's degree in speech and communication. I taught college a little bit, but my public life has been involved in government at a local level. I served in city council. I was at one point one of the youngest people ever elected in Cleveland City Council. And at age 30, I became, at 31, I became one of the youngest people ever elected mayor of a big city in American America. I started young and I can tell you that for the students who are here, if any of you are interested in public life, start now. You don't have to serve an apprenticeship. You have to only be a voter. And I think that's really important for young people to take their interests, their talents and abilities, and take it into the world and show the world that what you think has gravity, that it has importance. And so I'm here with that in mind. I went on to serve as a member of the Ohio Senate and then I became a member of the United States Congress. I served eight terms in the U.S. House of Representatives where I was a leader in education as a member of the Education Committee, a leader in healthcare, a leader in peace, a leader in the environment, all things that still concern us today. I also ran twice for the Democratic nomination for President of the United States in 2004 and 2008. But that journey leaves me here today to Worcester. I'm looking forward to your questions and I appreciate the opportunity to share some time with you. Thank you very much.
Alrighty, thank you. And could we have a round of applause for all of our speakers that came out to answer Now, with our first topic, civic engagement. What do you focus on to meet the original goals you set when you started a life of public policy? Mayor Brenneman, you're first in line to answer.
Sure. I started out in public service by being a member of the Planning Commission here in the city of Worcester. I served on that for six years. When I was on the Planning Commission, the north end did not exist as a commercial area of farm fields. So, one of the first things that I was involved with was helping to lay out that north end of our town as a member of the Planning Commission. I mean, it wasn't me personally, it was our group and our planner Val Jeznik at the time and the city councils making that decision. I served there for the six years and then I joined city council and served on city council for 10 years. Much has changed in Worcester over that time. We've seen industries that made our city go away and we've seen other industries that have come into our town that are new leaders of the workforce. So that was a great learning experience. I think I was a member that hopefully did some leadership things on this council and I think we moved our city forward during those 10 years.
Unfortunately, we have to move on. Mr. Barnett, thank you.
Yes, thank you. For me, I just recently started a life towards politics. So what I did was I started with the Democratic Party. I went to the meetings. I let them know that I was interested in being involved. I became precinct captain of an area where I live in Worcester. I've also gotten involved with the community. I was a founding member of Indivisible Worcester. As a matter of fact, at this point, I am now the president. I also am a member of Concerned Citizens of Wayne County, which is a bipartisan group that we want to try to get a dialogue going between both sides. I also helped organize the community coalition that put together the Anti-KKK rally in town last year. I helped organize the Second Women's March here in Worcester earlier this year. And when the students here were looking for advice for the March for Your Lives, they found me and I was able to advise them a little bit. So for me, the, you know, being civic, civic engagement is being involved with your community, reaching out to people and having the people look to you as a leader and seek you out. And hopefully I can bring that also to the State House.
Thank you very much, Mr. Barnett. Representative Wickham?
Thank you. So I got involved with public service about 13 years ago. I looked at the county and I wanted to be involved with the decisions that were being made at the local level. I thought about, you know, I've always been interested in what's happening at the state and the federal level. So I got involved, I looked at, I had been involved with political science. That was my, that was my master's degree at University of Akron. And so I looked at that position and I wanted to be a part of things. I wanted to represent people and talk about the issues that matter to our community. So I didn't get involved. I ran, won that election and I am here today still doing that same thing for Wayne County. Now just at a different, a different place, down in Columbus. But that's, that's been my story and my involvement in my civic engagement.
Thank you very much. Mr. Kucinich, your response is final.
I see this moment as not so much being about me as it is about you and how you can get involved. You don't have to serve an internship. Your moment of empowerment comes when you step forward, when you see something you really care about, when you understand that your feelings are so powerful, you want to express them. That's when you need to step forward. And that can happen in a civic meeting, it can happen in a classroom, it can happen in a forum like this. You need to be heard from. The writer Ralph Waldo Emerson once talked about how he sat in a meeting and heard someone else speak the words that he was thinking. And when you're in a meeting such as this or any kind of meeting, the first step towards empowering oneself is to be ready to interact with everyone and speak your mind. And standing up and speaking out was really my path to public service and it can be the path of anyone here, whether you're going to be in government or whether you're just going to perform the duties of a citizen.
Thank you, Mr. Kucinich. Thank you to all the speakers for your responses. Now the next question from students is, "How do you respond to civic engagement and what have instances of engagement taught you?" Mayor Brenneman, would you lead us off?
I'm sorry, could you repeat that question?
Sure. "How do you respond to civic engagement and what have instances of engagement taught you?"
You know, there are really two kinds of civic engagement. The one that is prevalent in our city is a very positive civic engagement. It means being involved with the churches and the Red Cross and the Salvation Army and the food bank and the Kiwanis Club, the Key Club, the Rotary Club, anything that promotes improving our community in some way, shape, or form. And I truly encourage anyone sitting in this room that those are vehicles out there to make us a better place and to help and get involved. And I think you'll truly enjoy it once you do. The other is a disruptive type of civic engagement. That's rare in our city and I'm truly thankful of that. What I would describe as disruptive is an uncivil type of debate. We can sit up here in opposition parties and talk like this and this is a civil discussion, which is good. If it gets to the point where it does harm to others or with an intent to do harm, that is not good. So those are the two types of civil debate. How I see it in the activities that people do throughout our community every day.
Thank you, Mr. Brenneman. Mr. Barnett, the floor is yours.
One more time with the question, please.
Sure. "How do you respond to civic engagement and what have instances of engagement taught you?"
I kind of listed everything that I've been doing since I've really become involved. I always thought prior to getting involved that I was civic minded. I voted, you know, I spoke to my kids about politics, meet sit down and have debates. But it wasn't until I actually stepped up and decided that I couldn't sit on the sideline any longer, that I needed to actually become involved, that I started to talk to people. And one of the things that I found amazing was that there are many people here in Worcester in Wayne County that are afraid to express their opinions, that are afraid to come to a rally or afraid that their business would suffer if they came out and, you know, had a strong opinion about something. I really feel that that is a horrible thing. I think we all should be able to speak our mind and be able to feel that repercussions, you know, aren't, you know, aren't going to be held against us. So, you know, I hope that for people that have come to me on the side and said, you know, "I'd like to, you know, help or do more, but I can't," I want to be a voice for them. I want to be that person that can, you know, speak for the people that feel that they can.
Thank you, Mr. Barnett. Representative Wickham, whenever you are ready.
Civic engagement, well, it happens all the time in my position right now. I get lots of letters and calls from folk from Wayne County, sometimes even closer not, not from Wayne County. But I believe that civic engagement's important. I think it's important to talk to your elected representatives, find out where they are, what they believe. My background is in a thought process that I want, I want to see government be more efficient, more effective, and even leaner than what it is. I don't want to see it injected in our personal lives as much. I want to see more freedom and liberty. So those are kind of the big background civic thoughts that I come out of and when I engage people, those are kind of things that I look at, how we can maybe figure out how we can meet in someplace or even how we can work somebody through the Columbus system to make sure that they get the answers that they need. But those are the types of things that will happen in my position.
Thank you Representative. Mr. Kucinich, the floor is yours.
When people engage and they want to make your opinions heard, anyone who's in public office must listen. So listening is really important. Actually, you don't learn anything when you're talking, you learn when you listen to people. And so not only do I listen, but it's about answering phones, answering mail, returning emails, doing everything you can to stay engaged because that's what makes one a better representative of the people. The other thing I want to share with you is that you have the potential right now to move public opinion. I saw something happen a month or so ago that was extraordinary. 20,000 people, most of them very young people, came to Cleveland Public Square in order to march for their lives. And I was there with them. And I will tell you that that moved public policy, that caused people to take notice, that helped to accelerate a shift in public opinion about whether or not assault weapons should be readily available. So you can do that now. It's not, you know, you don't have to wait. You can be those who organize and create civic engagement, which causes public officials to have to stand up and take notice. You don't have to wait, your time is here now and you actually have the potential to change the world. It's isn't just about Ohio. You know, if you remember the story of Malala, there's a young, young woman in Pakistan who took on terrorists and she ended up becoming a world symbol of what happens when young people stand up. Remember the power you have now.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Kucinich. Moving on to the next question from students. "We have seen a disconnect form between the government and the public. What steps will you take to prevent this disconnect and what will you do to reverse this occurrence in your respective offices?" Mayor Brenneman?
I guess I don't agree that there is a disconnect at the local level. And the reason I say that is locally, you see your public officials almost every day. You run into them in the grocery store, you run into them in schools, you run into activities, baseball games, football games. So you have direct contact with the people who are making decisions for the community. And we have council meetings twice a month. It's the first and third Monday evening, starting at 7:30 down at City Hall, just above our downtown fire station. You are all welcome to come and express your opinion at any council meeting. If you don't make council meetings, you can contact a council person, you can contact the mayor's office. You have so many avenues to be involved in local politics. Once you get to the federal level, it gets a lot more difficult.
I'd hate to cut you off, but we are trying to stick as close to that 45-second timeout as possible. Mr. Barnett?
I believe that you just need to stay connected. I think you need to, for me, if I was elected, it means being in the community. It means having office hours more often than once every blue moon. It means there be, just talking to people and getting out there, having people know that you're there for them. Even if they don't show up, if you have to sit in an empty office for a couple hours because nobody happens to be seen, you do that and you do that every week or you do that as much as possible so that when it is needed, you're there. And I think that's the most important part, is just stay connected with the people that you're representing.
Thank you, Mr. Barnett. Representative Wickham?
Yeah, I would agree with Mayor Brenneman that the disconnect probably seems greater as you go to more towards the federal level. Obviously, you've got a different system, a different system of government in the sense of how many people they represent and what types of things that they are constitutionally required to do and then from the state and then the local. So the disconnect, if there is one, it may be because you disagree with what's happening. That can certainly be one reason that could be a disconnect. But my phone is always open, people know my number, and I've always reached out, tried to reach back to people who have contacted my office for different reasons, for whatever that reason may be. And so I think that maybe if there's a feeling of disconnect, we might be talking a little bit more about what's going on at the federal government level than locally.
Thank you. And Mr. Kucinich?
If you use your cell phone to call someone and the phone gets, the call gets disconnected, what do you do? You call again. If somebody, if you're knocking on the door and no one answers, what do you do? You knock again. If you want government to be effective, you have to be proactive. And you keep knocking and you keep calling until someone answers. And they will answer. In my congressional office, we handled about 12,000 requests for service a year. It's our principal job. And as long as you're proactive and you engage with people and you welcome people, people will come. But when officials aren't welcoming, well, you can change that, you can change the officials. But the disconnect though requires, the government is passing this, it also requires you to just say, "Oh, forget about it." Keep knocking on the door, keep calling.
Thank you very much. The next question was asked by 12 different students. "What do each of you believe qualifies you for your office?" We decided to ask this question within the civic engagement questions as government officials are extremely engaged civically in their job. Mayor Brenneman, whenever you are ready.
What qualifies me? I was born and raised here in Worcester 62 years ago. I went to Lathan Elementary, Edgewood Junior High, and Worcester High School, which is now known as Cornerstone. I went to Wittenburg University and got a dual degree in geology and earth sciences. I taught school for two years straight out of college down in Westerville and then I joined into the oil and gas and energy industry. I worked for a local company for four years and then I ended up buying most of the assets of that company and started my own and have been in business and still am in that business today, 35 years later. My father was mayor before me, back from 84 to 94, so I saw what the position entailed. He got me involved in the Planning Commission and from there I moved on to city council and to the mayor's job. I guess I feel I'm pretty ingrained in this community throughout my whole life.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Barnett?
What qualifies me is I believe for most of my career, I've been in customer service. That means listening, that means trying to solve problems for the customers that I've dealt with. It's, for me, it's a desire to truly help people, to actually listen, to do what you can to help each individual that you come in contact with. I think every time you have a chance to speak with somebody and come in contact with them, it's an opportunity to, you know, make their lives better if you're in a position to do that. So the burning desire to do that is what qualifies me for this job.
Thank you, Mr. Barnett. Representative Wickham?
What qualifies me, you know, I could sit and talk about maybe the budgets that we put together as a county commissioner, some of the diving into the issues of economic development in the county, workforce development in the county, and other things like that. For 12 years, I had worked with, within the Ohio Revised Code. I had seen things that I'd like to see changed and I wanted to be a part of that. But really what qualifies somebody for this position is that the majority of your citizens believe that you should be there and vote for you and put you in office. And that's your qualification for this job.
Thank you Representative. Mr. Kucinich?
As a candidate for the Democratic nomination for governor, I think the first thing that qualifies a person is when they show up. And I would also add that my experience as a city councilman, clerk of courts, mayor of Cleveland, state senator, United States Congressman, two-time presidential candidate is probably not matched by anybody who's run for that office in Port au Prince. But beyond that, beyond, way beyond that, is my desire to serve. Because if you want to be a leader, you must first be a serf. And so that service means being with the people, listening to their concerns, being willing to take their concerns to the highest level, being willing to walk into a restaurant and have one of the waiters say, "Hey, what do you think about this?" And having that opinion count just as much as somebody who is an exalted officer or a reformist. So it qualifies me to serve as a president, but I also care.
Thank you, Mr. Kucinich. Thank you to all the speakers for your responses. Now the final question from students for this topic. "Do you support movements that involve civic engagement and if yes, which movements?" Mayor Brenneman, the floor is yours.
Yes, I do. As far as which movements? You know, there was the movement that was really organized with the College of Worcester in the downtown where... Worcester in the downtown, where there was some fear that our city was going to be influenced by some, some negative influences, uh, from surrounding areas. And, uh, there was a rally on our square, a unity rally. They called the Come Unity Rally. Uh, that, that was a, a good event. I, I was nervous, I know our police force was nervous about, uh, some disruptive forces that, that could have appeared, and they did not. So, so I, it achieved a, a good result, and I think that's the best example I can think of.
Thank you, Mayor. Now, Mr. Barnett, your turn.
Thank you. Um, yes, I believe that is, uh, good, and I, my, what I believe is, um, the March for Our Lives, the movement for the students that has grown out of a tragedy, um, is very important. And I think if that is the reason that people of your age is getting involved, then that's great, because you guys are being involved, you're the future, you're the people that are going to be in charge soon enough, and your opinions count. And one of the things that I find amazing with this movement is, as a, uh, parent, we always talk about, uh, the phone with our kids and put it down and, you know, leave them alone, and, but you guys have been able to connect with each other through your different networks, and have actually made companies change their mind because you would call for, um, you know, a, a boycott of a product or a company. You guys have been able to do that. That's what makes this movement so much different, so much more important, and I support it a hundred percent.
Thank you, Mr. Barnett. Representative Wickham?
Yeah, I support movements that, um, protect freedom of speech, movements that support our individual rights. Those are the type of movements that I think that are pretty important, and, uh, those are the type of movements that I'd like to, to see. But, you know, each, every person has the right to say what they would like to say or make the statement that they want to make. And, uh, so, the, the movements that can be engaging, the movements that we can, uh, have conversations together, uh, together, I, those are the things that I, I do support.
Thank you, Mr. Brennaman. Mr. Kusinich?
Uh, I, I'd like to associate myself with your remarks, because I think that, uh, we, we need to protect individual rights. At the same time, uh, when, when a movement occurs, we have to listen to what people are saying, because there is a kind of a genius of the common man and woman who come forward to speak their mind. I was a leader for peace in the United States Congress, and I participated in that movement. I've been a leader on the environment, I've participated in that movement. I'm being led now by students who are trying to ban assault weapons, I participate in that movement. Uh, one does not have to be leading it, you can participate. We need to respond to movements, hear what people are saying. If we disagree, we need to tell them why, we may come to a higher understanding. Thank you.
Thank you. And now, we'll move on to our second, second topic, college credit plus and education.
Apply only at the state level. Therefore, Mayor Brennaman, you have the option whether or not to answer in this section. The first question from the Worcester, uh, high school students is, "We have seen constant miscommunication within the college credit plus system between our high school and the colleges offering credit. What will you do to address the issue of miscommunication?" Mayor Brennaman, would you like to comment?
Actually, I, I don't want to extend the, the evening, there's, there's no comment from the city side.
All right, moving on to Mr. Barnett.
Well, I didn't know there was any, uh, miscommunications, uh, from what I've read. Um, it seemed fairly clear, but I'm sure there are. And if, it means getting involved and clearing up what those miscommunications are, or, um, detailing what the college credit plus system should be and what its, um, goals are, then, then I think we need to get in there and do that. Um, but other than that, you know, I believe that overall, the, the plan is a, a good idea.
Thank you. Representative Wickham?
Well, college credit plus has, um, sixty-eight thousand students go through it in the last year. Uh, it saved about a hundred and forty million dollars in, uh, tuition, college tuition for students who have taken those classes. Uh, I think it's very important, I support college credit plus, and if there's issues between the communication, between, between schools, or whether or not, uh, our students are getting all the information they need to make CCP work, um, I, I want to hear about it, I'm going to sit down, and then I'll find the appropriate avenues to go and fix and work on these problems. If I don't want to fix it, you have to work with others to get these problems fixed. And, uh, so that's what I would like to do.
Thank you, Representative. Mr. Kusinich?
Well, the representative points, points out that there's over a hundred million in savings, right? That, and so, as governor, what I would do, first of all, is to make sure that every college in Ohio, the governor makes appointments in, for higher education, that everyone who's appointed would know that it's my intention to see this college credit plus program fully, fully accorded credit. And, you know, I, what I think is behind this, I think some colleges are afraid of losing money, so they actually try not to provide the credit, so that kids will have to pay more money to go to college instead of getting credit. I think it's a financial issue. And, and to me, I want two years free college, I mean, maybe we could talk about that another year. But I think that this credit plus, uh, we, it has to be maintained, it has to be respected, and colleges have to fully participate.
Thank you, Mr. Kusinich. Thank you to all the speakers for your responses. Now, the next question from students. Students are constantly pushed to accelerate in all subject areas, with college credit plus being one accelerated option, and many students consider it. Right now, there is a cloud of confusion around where the credit transfers. What will you do to unify the policy of credit transfer? We will start with Mr. Barnett.
Well, the, um, I believe that it's, it's, if you can save a, a student, uh, on their future tuition, I think that's a, a great, uh, thing. I don't think you should be, uh, pushed to take those classes, and part of the problem, I think, is that it doesn't address that middle-income C student that wants to go to college. Um, that's where we're lacking. I think New York came up with the Excelsior Scholarship, which made college for two-year and four-year state school tuition free. Um, the, the scholarship had some problems, that there isn't, it isn't perfect, but it is one of the, a great first step towards alleviating, um, student debt in the future. And what I'm wondering is why have, you know, if New York was able to make students a priority, why haven't, why hasn't Ohio?
Thank you, Mr. Barnett. Representative Wickham?
Well, on this particular issue, I mean, I've worked with, uh, finding out what the problem is and what the, the complaints are, and try to work through that. For instance, I've got a, uh, there's a, there's a teacher that is in the career center, he teaches building programs. And what they do there is, for graduation, they do credentialing. And he's got a module that he wants to get credentialed, so I've been trying to work with the Ohio Department of Education. And now, if we can't get through that hurdle and find what that teacher is looking for to make sure that his students are successful in the future, then I either have to present a bill, craft a bill, present a bill, and present it to try to put that pressure on and see what we can do to help this teacher out, get credentialed for these students that are learning a certain skill level. But that's how we do, that's how we do it.
Thank you. Mr. Kusinich?
I think one of the things that school boards need to do is to empower the kind of, uh, approach that we're talking about. I think that, um, when, you know, every school is different, every school district is different. And when somebody, uh, sets out on a course that could be of benefit to the young people, that may be a little bit different than, than the standard curriculum, we have to find a way to credential add, we have to find a way to make sure, uh, that all the way up and down the system, that's going to be respected. And, uh, the whole thing about education is, you can't put people in silos and say, it can only be this way. We have to broaden our definition of education, and I'm certainly willing to do that as governor. I, I want to say I'm going to have to, uh, leave right now. I have, uh, another meeting I have to go to, that we're just a couple days away from the election, and we have a pretty, probably contested race. But I appreciate being here, and I, uh, I want to congratulate the students for holding a one-of-a-kind form. We haven't had anything like this in the entire state of Ohio, which is why I was interested in coming here to see it. Uh, Worcester looks like it's, uh, ahead of, uh, other schools, and I suppose that's why they call you the general, so.
Thank you, Mr. Kusinich, for coming to the conference. All right, moving on to our next question. Uh, moving to the next question from students, they seem to believe that funding for education has been at a constant decrease, and with a decrease in funding comes program cuts. What will you do to make sure that academics don't become secondary to athletics in terms of funding? Mayor Brennaman, if you'd like to answer.
Okay, athletics becoming secondary to?
Um, I, these are all students submitted, uh, I'll try to clarify.
Sure.
Um, I believe what they're trying, uh, to say is that they're worried that schools will start to divert funding that should be going to academic programs, um, to athletic departments, and what you would be able to do to stop that, what happened?
Um, actually, your school board is a controlling force on, on that, and, uh, they set the budgets for the, the schools and the educational objectives of the schools. Uh, they also include, uh, athletics as part of that. So, uh, really, that's, that's the key, is talk to your school board members and, uh, let them know what you feel is important. I know we've done alternative funding methods, like play to, or pay to play, uh, methods, many, many school systems have, uh, brought that in. But the school board is the key on it.
Thank you. Mr. Barnett?
Yeah, I have to agree, the, uh, school board would be the first line of defense, um, for something like that to happen. Um, but I think the broader picture is that the kids are feeling that education is not being, um, given the right amount of, um, attention than it should be given. Um, I think that for us, or for anybody at federal level, state level, town level, your family level, when you make something a priority, you tend to find the money for it. And I think that's where we've, um, failed so far. So, we haven't made education the priority that it should be, and I think that's what we need to do, is we can find the money, we just got to make it a priority to do so.
Thank you. And Representative Wickham?
Yeah, in a state of Ohio, the school systems, uh, are locally driven, and yet they are also state-funded, uh, and there's a mixture of dollars that are there. Uh, from the state, the schools have not, uh, overall, uh, received less money, it has not been going down, and I can, I can get those numbers for, uh, anyone if you'd like to have that conversation. It is the biggest part of the GRF, the General Revenue Fund budget, um, well over fifty-two percent of that budget, and it's the fastest-growing expenditure line item within the state's budget. I will say this, in the last two years, uh, there may have, it may be eclipsed with the speed that Medicaid expansion has been growing, but, uh, it is not something that is just put to the side. There are a lot of different interests, though, that are going on in, in the school conversations. And I think one of the things that we need to do is, elected officials have tried to drive the conversation, um, that is happening in our local schools to our, our, uh, to the state, to make sure that you're getting the flexibility, that schools are getting the flexibility they need to do the job that they see fit for our children.
Thank you, Representative. The next question from students deals with the environment as well as education. In our high school, we have only one class that looks at the environment. This lack of educational opportunity for all leaves our generation, our next generation, ignorant to environmental concerns. What do you intend to do to make sure students are learning about the environment? If not in the school, then where and how? Mayor Brennaman?
We have one of the, the best, uh, environmental, uh, learning areas, uh, around, and it's in our wastewater treatment plant. We have a anaerobic digester that is producing natural gas, that is actually running generators that power our, our wastewater treatment plant and our water plant. So, it is taking waste products that, turning them into energy. So, uh, it's right here in our community, uh, the schools are more than welcome to be a part of, of that and, uh, how, uh, the operation produces the natural gas and how we, how it works every day, so.
Thank you, Mayor Brennaman. Mr. Barnett?
On a school level, I guess it's got to be something where, if there's one class and there's not a whole lot of, uh, students running up for it, then you're probably not going to add to that. If there's an interest there, I believe that, you know, uh, we should open up the classes to do that. However, the bigger picture is, for me, I'm a member of the Sierra Club, which is a watchdog for the environment, and Wayne County is, has some issues with the, um, pipelines running through it, and there is definitely an environmental danger to that. Um, and it's something that we need to be very careful about, and everything we look into it. Um, it was not too long ago at the new, um, sub, I think it was compressor station just outside of town, there was a release of pressure, but it's not just pressure, the, um, pipeline actually had, um, gas in it, it would have been a release of gas into the, um, community. Um, it went on for, uh, twenty minutes, I believe, um, and so, that was something that we got to keep an eye on. And, um, you know, so, I think if you want to be involved in the environment, you have to, you know, go out there and find where, where you fit in. Uh, the Sierra Club, like I said, is a, a great.
Thank you, Mr. Barnett. Unfortunately, we have to move on. Representative Wickham?
Uh, for the, for twelve years, I sat on the Joint Solid Waste Committee, uh, that involves Stark, Wayne, and Tuscaloosa Counties, and there are many grants that are available there, uh, grants that can help schools out if, uh, they want to learn more about the environment, uh, more about recycling, more about how we, how we deal with our trash and we deal with other, uh, chemicals that may be in the, in, uh, in our environment. So, I would, I would say, I would say that the students need to reach out to moms and dads, to teachers, and to the school board to find out what they would like to do, how much time they would like to dedicate. But as an elected official, I want to give your school flexibility to make those decisions as a community, rather than the state telling you what you should and should not do as far as how many environmental classes you have.